Get squared with the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all of you, for coming out tonight and being wishful or thankful perhaps that this is not snow. Imagine how much snow there'd be after tonight. Minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
No.
May we have a motion to a question?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Chief, I think that you're up next.
This is the police department activities for the month of February 2014. In February 2014, there were 234 requests for police services received through the Chester County Communications System. This number does not include the requests made directly to the state police and were handled by the state police without county radio being involved. 147 of these requests were handled by the township police, 87 by the state police when the township was not working. The township currently provides 80 hours of police services. Due to the nature of some residents' problems, the township police are often involved after the township police coverage expires. Excuse me. Both officers provide those hours without requesting compensation. Overtime hours are paid to the township patrol officer when requested the end of the shift requires more time and he doesn't request the overtime. The chief does not receive overtime hours. In January, 20 hours of secretarial service was provided to the police. In February, all the time was given to the police's present activities. There is a lot of catch-up work for the secretary. Eventually, the police will be able to make a better summary of all that occurs in the township. We're also working with the state police to cross-reference those calls that do not show up in the county information. One of the big items in February was we were awarded traffic grants. As reported in January, the township police received notice of aggressive driving monies available for erratic driver enforcement. In February, the county notified us that funds for DUI checkpoints were also approved for us. These checkpoints made possible by the participation of multi-police departments assigning officers. All of these officers are trained in the methods used in DUI checks. Officer Noel has participated in these programs throughout the county. By assigning him, we receive these services of other officers on the team. Checkpoints on Route 1 have been very successful in the last two years. Hopefully, we will reduce the number of DUI accidents occurring here. One of the things I mentioned is his hours, as well as the other officers on the team, are all paid for by this grant, so this doesn't cost the township anything. Snow-related police work. On February 3, the township received eight inches of snow, followed by 12 inches of snow on February 5. The February 5 storm was coupled with high winds, ice, which brought a number of large trees down on electric wires, causing large power outages. Some residents were without power for more than a week. Both the Longwood and the Kennet Fire Companies responded to a high volume of fires and alarms. Most gas alarms were caused by carbon monoxide entering residents' homes due to generators being parked too close to open garage doors. Some generators were actually in the garages. Police spent a considerable amount of time explaining why the carbon monoxide alarms were activated. The causes of the power outages were explained to many residents. Many residents were explained why the township has no control over electric power utilities. Many residents questioned why some residents had power and some did not. This occurrence was also explained. Pico itself had over 700,000 customers out of power in its coverage area. The township was aided from a number of out-of-state power companies who were brought in by Pico to assist with their repairs. Buffalo was one, Indiana, Chicago. There were quite a few of them in the township, but they had to be guided to the different locations where the power outages were. Police received many positive comments about the alerts issued by our township manager, keeping them up-to-date on the storms. In my opinion, as well as Officer Noel's, our township road crew did an excellent job keeping these roads open for the emergency equipment that had to pass. I'll mention two other things. On the aggressive driving, if you will note in the summary, we had a number of erratic driving calls. These weren't during the snow. We already have a number this month. Most of them occur on Route 1 and 52. A lot of them also occur on Kalen Road, Hillendale Road, Byer Road, so we're trying to deal with this problem, hopefully to get a reputation that if you aggressively drive in Kennet Township, you will be charged. I was also going to mention that through this aggressive program that the state has unleashed, I've left some brochures over here to show you what impaired, aggressive, unbuckled looks like. On the back, it explains the point system. Probably one of the number-one questions you get around the street is, "How many points do I get for this?" So, that's the first time I saw it put down in this manner, so we will be distributing these little pamphlets. And the last thing, may not seem like that critical, but the Department of Agriculture put this thing, call it "All Dogs Down," what every police officer, police chief, commander needs to know about dog complaints and the PA Dog Law. And it's sponsored at five locations through the state. I think it's beneficial for me to attend. I attended one about 20 years ago, but the state law on dogs changed two years ago, and the last couple of years, we've had to ask the court to extinguish a couple of aggressive dogs that were causing a problem in neighborhoods. That's not easy for the dog owner or the person who made the complaint in the first place, but under the law, aggressive dogs can be put down. And a few minutes ago, I noticed that it says, "Bring your own lunch." So, this is an all-day event. I didn't realize it was that much to get, but this really is one problem that affects neighborhoods, that the township gets questioned about quite a bit. And in the law, it says, "Police officers shall enforce the dog law." So, it doesn't make any difference whether the state police or local police. We are obligated, under that law, to enforce it. So, I thought it was a good idea to take this course. Okay, that's it?
Thank you. Do I, am I correct in assuming that your report will go onto the web?
Yes.
So, that's available?
Already have it going.
Good.
And the other thing we're trying to do, and I don't think I quite explained that here, is that the state police, in trying to get an idea on what occurs in Kennet Township, will allow us to review their calls to see which ones came in to them directly that they handled, so we get a better idea of what's going on, and we'll figure out the total from that. And when I met with the lieutenant, they were very positive about it. They don't normally do that, but because we're doing the assessment, and he's going to talk to the troop commander about allowing us to do that on a regular basis, but we'll have to go get it, because to do it for every municipality, that would be tremendous.
Good. Thank you.
I have a question about the alarms that went off and people using the generators. We may or may not get more power outages, but how many homes were you called to or were the fire department called to?
I don't have that exactly.
You know, have some idea?
Close to 30, well, 30 total, whether it was a fire, and there were quite a few fires. When the power came back on, there might have been a wire laying on their house, the trees caused some power problems. Some people had heaters inside the houses, and they actually had fire and extinguished it. One of them, they extinguished it, thinking it was out. It wasn't out. And six hours later, the house is burning. So, never question about calling the fire company. If you have any kind of fire, call the fire company, let them determine. The amazing thing about carbon monoxide is it's odorless and tasteless, and their alarms in their houses went off. They're trying, and this is an alarm system, they're trying to put the alarm system out. The fire company's automatically on the way. And some people were actually shocked when the fire company goes in and they have the equipment to test for this, but a couple of them, their faces were fire-engine red, so you know they're having a problem because they didn't smell it. They don't think so, so you had to convince them to go to the hospital, because we can't force them to go to the hospital unless we think they're in jeopardy.
Right, and I'm just trying to get an idea of how often that happened, because maybe if you weren't educating more people, we'll try not to do it.
We're going to educate on generators somehow. We already talked to the township manager about that, because it's the electric company which we will hear from, April 2, they don't have to provide 100% coverage. So, having a generator is a good thing. I've had them for years, but they can be all kinds of things. One of the things that happen with generators is they shut off, because the built-in generators have a low-will cutoff. So, their generators are going out. They think they're out of fuel, they're doing all kinds of things to them, and it's actually the low-will cutoff. So, there's a number of things that I don't think the generator companies or electric companies, whoever puts them in, is doing to explain the operations of a generator. So, and then there's portable generators, the cords, the way they're hooked up, they didn't have the right plugs, and they're just jamming wires into receptacles. These things are very dangerous. So, whether the emergency service does it or who does it, there is going to have to be some education on these. Good point.
I should make a couple of announcements. First of all, Sarah is doing our minute scores tonight, because Lisa apparently has a flu, so she has the evening off, and we have the pleasure of Sarah being here. I wanted to follow up on the chief's report and point out, as most of you, I believe, should have received written notice already, there will be a meeting with Pico representatives on April 2.
Correct, April 2?
April 2, I believe it's at Kennet High School, where residents will have an opportunity to meet with the Pico representatives and express their appreciation and their frustration, and Pico will have an opportunity to respond to all of those various expressions. I believe that brings us down to the website demo. Bill? Okay, hopefully this will load correctly. Is it loading? Can you shift that mic a little bit, Bill? You're talking away from it, so it's not picking up at all.
And I avoid these like a plague.
Thank you.
Okay, and it is loading here. Come on, Ben, let's do something here. Here we go, okay. I want to apologize first, because the website is not being cached at present, so it's a little slow. It's still in development, and the developer wants to keep it uncached, so it's easier for him to develop. So, you'll notice a little delay. The developer does admit that the website is a little slow, and we're going to be looking at alternative hosting if that continues to be the case. But this is the new website. It is on, it is live right now. We're in the process of filling some gaps. Two weeks ago, at the work session, we demonstrated a little of this, and since then, we've had a number of changes to it. You're looking at the homepage right now. These pictures come from an image file. Lisa has hired a volunteer photographer who has taken more pictures of Kennet Township. There will be more yet to come. These are just dropped into a folder. They'll display and rotate on the webpage to give people an idea of what Kennet Township is about. If I scroll down here, there's a little information about the township, which you probably have seen before if you've been to the prior site. The purpose of this format, it's very open. It's built more along the lines of a Google page, which has headlines and a small amount of text under it. The budget, the directory, and the FAQs are live. We're adding more FAQs at the present time. New to this website and new to Kennet Township will be a Google search engine, and it's right there, and you can type anything in there, one word, a phrase, whatever, and it will try to find whatever you may be looking for. So, if we want to look up tax here, and it will bring up all the items in the website that pertain to tax. We do have this tax information here, section while I'm here, and here, you're going to see a little of the slowness of the site right now. This should not be. This building has a problem, first of all, but compounding that is the slowness of the website, and we are working on the building to improve the speed. But here is the tax form at this point, and little things are missing here, like it says 27.4520. It should say 27.4520 mils, obviously. Little things that we need to pay attention to. We have put in a calculator here, so if I can get this here, and maybe I should just scroll up the page. A person can input estimated earned income, estimate the assessed value of the home, and it'll tell you how much tax you should expect in Kennet Township. And down at the bottom here, because a lot of people are worried about taxes, it tells you, but of all these taxes, Kennet Township is only responsible for $810 of this $10,800 tax bill. So, just little things to try to help the resident with what's happening in township in terms of costs and, as you see more of the website, what's happening in the website. We have also, I just clicked on the home key and trying to get back to the homepage, what you see on the right frame while this is loading is a stationary frame, so you'll see that on most all pages, but the other item you'll see on the site here is select language, and we have one language in there, because 37% of Kennet Township is Hispanic. And so, we thought we'd build in Google Translate for free, such that the Spanish-speaking residents are not left out in terms of looking at this website. As we go down to the bottom here, the recent Kennet Township news that you see here, much of that is right here as well, breaking news. Lisa would feed this with a simple text entry, and it would display, and she has the, obviously, the administrative rights to go in and remove stuff and add stuff to start at a certain time. And down at the bottom of the website, the footer page is basically the same throughout. This, if you enter your email address, you're going to be subscribed to the Kennet Township e-newsletter, which the chief mentioned before. That's what we use for the alert system, and Lisa has had many very positive comments because of the alerts that she put out during the snowstorm. In fact, when she started the alerts, I think there were 540 subscribers to Constant Contact, and today, I was just looking at it, there's 667 now, mainly because people were forwarding the alerts from Lisa to other residents, and they signed up. We're going to be removing this, because the township does not have a Facebook icon at this point, a Facebook account at this point. We're going to take these important links and move them over here. The Communications Committee, Jeff is on it, and Kathy used to be on the Communications Committee, but we're still going to decide on whether or not the township wants to have a Facebook account. I know Lisa does. I'm warning her that it could be a lot of work, because you do have to spend time keeping them up to date. But as we go into some of the other pages here, information on township, the boards, the committees, here, we're updating committee memberships and what have you, little things that really take a lot of time to do. We have the township checkbook now up online, and this is, we have December up. We have a process for taking the QuickBooks report from the financial system. Lisa drops five reports into a folder. She runs this program and converts it into one checkbook register, and that Excel spreadsheet is just supplied here. Present time, we only have a simple list. We're going to be providing an Excel file to, in case people want to play with the numbers. So, that's in progress. Job openings, there are none at this point. That page is empty. Ordances, this has been a huge amount of time, because if you remember the old ordinance page, we had just a number, a hyperlink date, but if you were looking for something, you'd actually have to click on all those hyperlinks to find something. Now, with the search engine, but now we have a table, and this was blank the other day. The developer didn't have it up. Let's see if it comes up now. But we're working on a table format that gives the date, the title of the ordinance, the ordinance number, and a category, and so make it a little easier for people to search the various ordinances. And so, here we go. We have some of it up right now. So, this is a lot of work to break that down, because we had to go in and grab all those ordinances, grab all the backup files, and put them in this table format. So, things are working in that regard.
If you click on an ordinance, which I have done recently, and it's hard, they don't really come up.
Yes, I just noticed that, too. This is linked over here, the number, and if I click on that, and I'm going to cross my fingers, let's see what happens, and we're seeing some of the slowness here, and it didn't come up.
Yeah, I'm getting a lot of that.
Right, there are, these are called 404-page errors. It can't find it at this point, and so I was on the phone with the developer today, working through some of these issues, and we're going to have a conference call with him Monday afternoon. We're going to resolve this. That's the type of due diligence that you do on these websites. You've got to go through every page, click on every link. Probably, nobody noticed, but even this email address is wrong up here. Okay? Yes, sir?
And I've also tried to use a search on that, and, for instance, the chief talked about, you know, going to a conference about state laws for dogs. I mean, if you use that and say, "Dogs," would that then get it if there's an ordinance for dogs, you know, concerning dogs? Quotations? Ordeons, for instance?
I don't know if there's, I think the chief was referring to a state law, not a township.
I know, but maybe there's some overlap?
There could be. And what we have to do, this is a question that has been posed to the developer, most of these files are PDF files. You need a special plug-in for the website to search inside a PDF. It's called an iFilter, and so we need, if, I had asked the developer if he had installed the Adobe iFilter, so that search engine, the Google search engine, can look inside a PDF. Otherwise, it's just going to pick up a title.
Right.
So, again, little things that we have to watch out for. So, we have an alarm registration form here. Lisa had sent out a message to everybody that has an alarm. They want everybody to come in with updated information, and one of the first people to try this was Mr. Yetter over here, and, but this is a fillable form. You can click on the date, and you can fill out the form right here. This is the intent with all forms in the township. We're going to make them all fillable. We have a number of forms that are already fillable, but the majority to date are basically copies of paper forms. And if you look at the building permit application, it's about nine or 10 pages long, that's going to take a lot of work to convert that over to a fillable form, but we're going to try to tackle that, and that's going to be our responsibility, not the responsibility of the developer. So, as this, and on the business side, we're going to have one more, one more page here in the business category. It's basically going to be doing business in Kennet Township, and we're going to try to at least present some information, so a small business wanting to move in will provide some information of what the requirements are, maybe what the benefits are, and so that's under development at this point. I think, and all the directory, and Jeff and I have been working together in filling out this page, which we're just going to link into the B&amp;B website, and we're going to borrow the restaurant guide from the Kennet Borough, and then add some names to that for the rest, a couple of restaurants in Kennet Township, just to make sure that we're complete if we do have visitors coming into the township wondering what there is to do. So, with that, we will be posting all of the newsletters on here. There will be a built-in calendar that will be updated in real time, basically, by Lisa. It will display, when you click on that, the calendar will come up. It's not there yet. We're still trying to make the decision of the format of the calendar. Is it going to be one of the hundreds of website calendars that are available? Outlook.com, something like that, that can embed into a website. So, we'll let the township residents know that as we get too close to 100%, but as anyone who has worked with a website before knows, the website is never done. It's constantly being updated as we go along. But it's, we like where we are. Again, Kathy was part of the team that helped us select the format and the developer. Open format, easy to use, and hopefully we'll get the content in there.
Is it live now, Bill?
It's live.
And so, this is replacing the website that we had previously?
Yes, and we have the old website files in case there's anything there that we need to look at for any reason.
Good. When do you think that, I understood that it's going to continue on. It's a work in progress forever. When do you expect that the vast bulk of that will be completed?
I'm hoping Monday afternoon, because the developer was given a list of all the corrections. Lisa and I spent several hours last Thursday, I think it was, just going through every page, every link, every word, provided the list of many items for the developer, things that were not correct. Talking to him today, Lisa and I are going to have a conference call with him Monday just to touch base, but he said he's going to shoot for having 95% of this done. The fillable form's going to take a little time. It's going to be one by one to get through, get through that.
Yeah, but the ordinances will all be up?
Yeah. And hopefully, we'll get the ability to search through the PDF in there correct.
Bill, where did you come up with the number of 37% Hispanic? I used that number with some planning commission members, and they poofed me.
I'll blurt, but I read it someplace, and, because I was amazed how high it is. I was amazed, too, how high it is. But I'll see. I'll let you know.
Are there other questions? John?
Will the minutes be of the board and the planning commission be searchable?
The minutes will-
All the way down to content level?
Yeah, the minutes, and thank you for bringing that up, because I failed to mention something. As many, as all of you probably know, we're recording this meeting right now. The camera's right over the chief's head there. And so, we're going to have, in the minutes page, there's going to be a table that says, "Board of Supervisors Meeting, March 19." Click here for the agenda, click here for the minutes, and click here for the video file. And the video file is posted already on YouTube, and it takes us, I'm helping Lisa with the process. It used to take me about an hour to an hour and a half to convert the feed from the video recorder into a YouTube file, so all that will be on the table, and in theory, hopefully, we'll get the iFilter right, and you'll be able to search inside the minutes and the agenda file.
How far back historically would you go with minutes?
Well, with minutes, we can go back, my goodness, years.
That would be very helpful for the planning commission, yes.
Okay. Now, I'm just not sure off the top of my head if we have planning commission minutes in there. I'm not sure of the process. Do you, does the plan, I know Lisa's the secretary of planning-
Just the same as the board.
Do you, does the plan, I know Lisa's the secretary of planning-
Just same as the board meeting.
Okay, so we have those on files someplace.
One example, we had this Tate Lumber complaint, and we had to go back like 10 years.
Okay.
It would be so much easier to-
Yes.
-search.
Yep. If Lisa can point me to that, I can make sure all those files are searchable, first of all. A little process you have to run on a PDF, but, and then we can, we can set up a table to get them organized too.
And I think they were on the old website, just chronological order.
And planning commission? Okay.
I think, yeah.
Okay. Then we have them.
Non-search.
It was fine what you did.
Yeah. Well, thank you, John. I'll make sure that I look into that tomorrow.
Okay. Question back here?
On aesthetics. When I went on the site, I was, I thought it was really handsomely done with the pictures. And I just wanted your comment on, on why you have pictures, you know, the revolving pictures on the website.
I think some of that comes from what the developer did for Kennet Borough and Historic Kennet Square. They're sort of set up the same way. And you know how every developer, website developer tries to, they're like lawyers. They never write anything. They just cut and paste.
Oh, sorry, Stan. Sorry.
Special contact, is that it?
That's, that's deep into that.
Yeah, I thought it was really nice, but I guess I have one question is that, have you thought about putting a caption under some of them?
That is, that has been asked, yes.
You know, for instance, you know, you have a picture of mushroom farms or something, buildings, and I'm, I know what it is. But if, if I were coming from outside saying, hey, maybe I'll buy a house in this township, and I see it out and I go, what's the heck?
Okay. It's a good point. We, in fact, we had an email today wondering why they're not captioned. And we can easily caption the picture. Well, I can't, because I don't know what some of these pictures are. But we can have someone caption the JPEG before it goes on the site. And so it'll display there. Thank you.
Do you want residents to submit pictures?
Why not, but without a guarantee that they'll be accepted, because-
Used.
Or used, sorry. It's that lawyer in him again. But the lady, and I can't, I can't remember her name. Lisa knows her.
Alex. Alex Alessandra Mezzanati.
Okay. She's doing her, the pictures are just beautiful that she's submitting. You can tell she knows what she's doing.
So she's a professional photographer.
There you go. Okay. So, I mean, that's sort of what we wanted. We had some landscapes that didn't show anything before because we had the pictures on file. So, but I think we'll end up captioning as you suggest, and it's easy to do to caption on.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? But it's really been a, a long and arduous effort, and the work is really quite, quite elegant. So I want to thank you on behalf of the board for the work that you've been doing. We look forward to continuing on and getting continually better.
And I should have mentioned in deference to the chief being here, that the police website is going to be embedded in this website. And I just sent out a message to the communications committee. We're going to get a couple of prototypes in, hopefully next week. And so I'm trying to schedule the communications meeting so the communications committee can be the first to take a crack at the prototypes. Then we'll send them to you guys with our comments, and then we'll get back to the developer site. This is the one we want to do.
Great.
Maybe with some alterations.
Yeah, no, thank you. It allows for a good flow of information to-
Yes.
-interested people, but then also will help if you have those forms set up for the efficiency of running the township too. So it's much appreciated.
Okay, good.
Oh, Bill, do you know where the chief's report will go on that website? Do you know where it's going to be listed?
I can almost see the outline, but there's going to be a section called the Chief's Commentary. And so we'll just break out the monthly minutes. We'll have current and then archived.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Sure. Excellent. I don't have anything listed on the agenda under Old Business. Is there any Old Business I need to address tonight?
No.
Okay. And that brings us up to the new business. One we have to do is pay bills.
We have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Good, so we will, we will do that. And then we have ordinance 215. Are you, so are you going to present that?
No. Let's see, I don't know if I was-
Good.
215, I don't know.
Ordinance 215 is something Lisa normally does, so forgive me as we do this on the fly. It's an ordinance of the township of Kennet, Chester County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the township to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with New Garden Township to share the cost of a pedestrian sidewalk project. It will be paid for in part by grant funds secured from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and to adopt by reference a memorandum of understanding with New Garden Township, outlining the agreement between the townships, repealing all inconsistent ordinances, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. All of that means, that to refresh everybody, the, the township is joining with New Garden Township and with Kennet Borough to create a sidewalk that is going to proceed from the edge of Kennet Borough through township lands up to and into New Garden along the, I believe it's the Zee or the Cypress. It's, I believe it's along Cypress Street. There's been some suggestion that it should be along State Street, but I think it's along Cypress. And it will provide a pedestrian thoroughfare for people who currently are walking on Cypress Street, which is a danger to pedestrians and to the vehicles. And, but that requires a, a intergovernmental agreement to do that, because we're dealing with three different municipalities. And so that's what this, this ordinance is about. And I believe we've had an opportunity to look at it. And is there any discussion about it, or maybe we have a motion to enter into this? I'll, it's on the north side of Cypress, to be exact. And I'll move if we approve it.
I'll second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed? So we will adopt that. Do you have any questions on that?
Sure.
I've seen people walking on that in the road, so it's, it's a great ordinance. I've also seen people on their bikes on the road. And I'm wondering if there's been any consideration besides the walkway is to have a bike lane?
I don't know if it's in that part, but in Kennet Borough, I had a chance to do a walk with regards to looking at sidewalks and bicycling on, on Cypress. And it was focused on sidewalks. If you looked where bicycles were as you went further down, it was problematic at best. So I think they're not looking at bicycling in this part at this point in time.
Does the memorandum of understanding include the borough? Is the borough going to share cost? Or is it just between New Garden and Kennet Township?
It's Kennet Township and New Garden Township.
And is there a formula for cost sharing?
Yeah, it was the length of the, of the wall.
Okay, so it's going to be total length and whatever.
We have those numbers. I got through the garden for pure people.
Okay.
Yeah, the borough has its own corridor where they got a grant to get the sidewalk up to that point.
Yes, John?
Just sort of a point of order. And I don't understand what the normal process is, but is an ordinance, be advertised before it's approved? I don't really answer that.
I believe it does.
Yeah, I thought we did at, at the last meeting, we discussed this ordinance, so I assumed it was advertised. I think, apologies to the Kennet paper, but I don't know if I actually look at that section to confirm it or not. But we had talked about it at the last meeting, so it's-
We also largely have it being advertised, yes.
And one last question. Has, have you all received a grant, or are you anticipating a grant?
We've made application for. That was done, I think, about a month ago. To the best of my knowledge, it has not been authorized yet. Are there any other questions regarding this? This is something that's been in gestation with the township for probably a year and a half that we've gotten to this point now. So it's, we're making, it feels like it's been slow, but it's, we're working our way up through the gears to get this big truck moving. Okay, that takes us to roadwork. Do you have a report? I apologize, I feel very-
Lisa got saved last night.
I got noticed today.
I can, I can read this, or you can read it.
All right. Thank you.
Or I could.
Somebody can read it.
Would you like to? Sure, I'll read the road report. So the road report for January 11th to March 11th of 2014. As you know, most of the month was snow plowing, salting, and cleanup. We've ordered and mixed up material. The potholes are being repaired as they pop up, so if you see ones that are, that are not being rapidly repaired, let our township manager know, and she'll let our road crew know. The road checks every day update the list. The Kennet Township spring cleanup is scheduled for March 29th from 8:00 to noon. It's the same day as the red clay valley spring cleanup. The township will ride truck to pick up all baggage, trash, and haul them to the dumpsters. Bags, vests, and gloves are also provided by the township. It can be picked up at the office or maintenance garage. Thank you to all those who participate. Hopefully, we won't have snow that day. Chipping of trees and limbs are being done as the snow melts, uncovering more tree limbs. They're only chipping what fell on the road or in the right-of-way. The right-of-way covers an area to the side of the road, which some owners think is theirs, but actually is public, a right-of-way. The property owner is required to clean up the rest of the property. There are a lot of limbs now. Roger says they try to do as good a job as possible to assist on the minutes, but given the amount that are there, it's going to take them a while to get through everything. So thanks for your patience. A new township truck was ordered. This will place two older trucks in the fleet. Bids were requested by the municipal cooperative materials that are used throughout the township for its roads. Bids were opened, the low bids were recommended to the township supervisors for award that will take place tonight, which is probably the next.
Yes.
Are they on there? Okay, thanks. And the roads are evaluated for summer work projects, and will be going out to bid later this month.
Good. Thank you. Any comments or-
Co-op.
Okay. Bob, are you handling the Southern Chester County co-op bids? Now I have the Estradies.
I was not given anything about that. Sorry.
She should have a bid.
Yeah. We will have to do those.
Do they have to be done tonight? I don't think so.
No, but it's line painting and stuff, which will be later in the year.
Oh, wait a minute, here's something. Okay. I guess. I mean, should I just read what? It's just, it's every, it's all that.
You want to see it?
I've seen it before.
This is, this is from Roger Law, the roadmaster, to the board of supervisors and to the manager. Road maintenance materials bid award. I'm leaning back here away from the microphone. I apologize. At a meeting held on Thursday, February 20, 2014, the municipal cooperative of Southern Chester County accepted bids for road maintenance materials, services, and supplies. I should comment here, and Bob, perhaps you'll, you'll expand this. But the various municipalities in Southern Chester County have grouped together to use their collective-
Organizing power.
Power to be able to get a better purchase price. Hence the municipal cooperative of Southern Chester County. The purchasing committee of the cooperative made recommendations as to the lowest acceptable bidder in each category. The following bids were recommended for acceptance. And so I will read these. Do you want me to read them totally, or you want me to do the-
No, just the subject and the file cost, that's all you need.
Okay. Superior Plus Energy Services for fuel, which includes diesel and 92-octane gasoline. Alpha Space Control Company Inc. for line painting. 26.31 miles of double-yellow centerline, 18.56 miles of white edge line, and 960 lineal feet of 24-inch stop bars in white paint. And some miscellaneous others. New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company doing business as Martin Limestone. And this is for stone. And there's Rice Number 8 Stone, 2A material, 2B special stone, 3A material, Number 3 Stone, Number 1 Ballast, and anti-skid. And there are a lot of tons. Highway Materials Inc. for-
Blacktop.
Okay. It doesn't say what it is. It's wearing 9.5-
Says it on the agenda.
Yeah, I see. It doesn't say on here. And then Road Oils AMS.
So you have something that has the price for things?
That's all I have, and I didn't even know I had that.
Okay. Start. Do we usually-
We usually-
Should we accept this? So we have a motion that's all made into-
These are things that you're going to sign, and it's probably-
And ASK might have the prices on.
Yeah, that probably is the price.
And that's the important.
Yeah, so we'll have that, but you, you'll be signing this afterwards.
Do we need to read those?
You ought to mention one price for just a couple things here, or the total bid.
Would you like to? You know what you're looking for?
There are all different things, there for all the different bids. This is the blacktop. Road oils.
There's no, there's no price on the fuel oil. It's to be determined.
Okay.
Oh, here's, here's one. So the line painting.
I just put it on when, yeah, it's on the website.
Prices of-
We think of it.
They're not total, but they're individual. Oh, here's the total contract of $21,132.34 to Alpha Space Control.
Yeah, each one of those is a, is a separate bid.
For blacktop to the Highway Material Inc. is $35,895.
Okay, the stone is $17,137.
The AMS for Road Oils is $29,000 even.
That's all I got.
And then we're done.
Okay. It's been moved that we accept these bids. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed? Excellent. Thank you. Excellent, thank you. And again, I, I thank all of you for your patience as we work through this. We have our first, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to bring up something in the roadwork. I got an email today that hopefully tomorrow they'll be putting the signs out and barriers along Route 52, if the weather permits, in anticipation of starting actual construction next week on the shoulder improvement program along Route 52. Well, that certainly is exciting news, this baby's been long in the birth process. You guys have been wonderful bid wives, so thank you for that good news, and thank you both for your continuing good efforts to make it happen.
Really? Yep, thank you. It'll be nice to see it start.
We have our first escrow release for Granite Ridge, Phase 1. Our engineer has recommended we release $1,163,498.68. I move we approve this release.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Do we know how much remain?
Yeah, do I know?
Yeah. Okay, so, because the first release sounded like a lot, but there's still a fair amount.
Yeah, there's still more than half of it left.
Great, thanks.
Plus all the contingency.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Very good. That carries us through our agenda for tonight. There's been ongoing public comment, is there any public comment that we'd like to make that have been heard yet? Bill?
Just wondering with the news this past week about the gun ordinance, that the judge in Kennet Square or Westchester, I'm not sure.
Dan Misano in Kennet Square for this district justice area.
And he, he said that the gun ordinance was, I'm not sure if I'm going to use the right words, Scott.
He didn't say anything official that I'm aware of. Chief can comment on what he heard because he was there, but what he did was to dismiss the action against one of the defendants, and maybe both of the defendants. It's not clear as to the second, because the second wasn't there and the case hadn't been called to be heard at that point, but he dismissed it, and, which is, which is awkward, but as far as I know, there is nothing that is, well, first of all, it's not, it's not a court of record that can be, that would create a written record that could impact on the enforceability of our, of our ordinance, except that if, if this district justice, who would be the one that would hear these cases initially? If he's opposed to it, then we're going to have a difficult time going beyond him, if it's because he believes it's unconstitutional.
Do we have a right of appeal? Does the township have a right of appeal?
I ask counsel of that, because normally, there is a right to appeal, but I'm advised that because it's a, a criminal action, that there is not a right of appeal by the prosecutor, which we would be prosecuting party, because it would be considered a double jeopardy. So, we're sort of caught as to being able to move from this box, but the issue is not yet resolved, and we already, we had already started the process of reviewing the ordinance, and so this gives us further impetus to move forward with, with, with more, more vigor. We already have drafts of, of changes to the ordinance to address what we believe to be the concerns that, that District Justice Misano expressed. Chief, do you want to add to what I've said?
Basically, he said the, the ordinance is invalid because local municipalities do not have the authority to regulate guns in Pennsylvania, and there's been some Newport cases that he looked at and said, that's it, you know, it's invalid because we don't have that authority. But he also said that it was, and to me, it is, I haven't talked to our solicitor yet about this, but township ordinance is a civil matter, it's not a criminal matter, so it's debatable whether we can move forward or not, but I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it. That's where we're at right now.
Again, it said it was a civil matter?
Township ordinance is a civil matter. It always has been as far as I know, that's why I want to talk to our solicitor, because this township ordinance is not under the crimes code, so I don't, I don't know, as you know, different counties do different things, and this is the first time he's in Chester County, so I don't know, it's just, I just haven't had the opportunity to talk to him. But the article, the article in Kennet Times said that our solicitor was reviewing.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That is correct. And, and has initially begun adjustments to the proposed ordinance adjustments.
Okay.
So, there will be more on this subject, sooner or not later. Any, yes?
Where do we stand with the zoning compliance and far martial compliance with Stevens Gardens? I think I maybe was in attendance at a meeting, maybe two meetings ago, where there was some discussion about some actions, specific actions that were going to be taken to try and bring that property into compliance, and I, I drive by and I see there, looks like they're operating for the most part, and it doesn't look like anything's been cleaned up there.
I can't tell you as to today, but as of, I believe, last week, we had, we had sent him a letter, actually, I think the letter was out perhaps 10 days or two weeks ago, directing him to, that he had a five days to, to begin to demolish, or else we would go in and demolish, and at that time, it appeared that he had begun to do the demolition work, so I was under the impression, and I haven't driven by and looked, but I was under the impression that demolition was going forward. We certainly have taken the step so that if it hasn't, we're able to go in and do it without any further delay, so we made the commitment that we're going to do that, so it will, it will be happening. Does anybody have any further input on that?
No, except
We will lean in if we have to do it, of course.
No, he has started. The building inspector, yes, the building inspector told me that he, he had started after he received the notice, and he had started to demolish still buildings, and there is, the activity I think you see is that process, but, you know, him, he can't stop, so he's being monitored closely.
Right, good. All right? Okay. Yes, John?
Well, back on the gun ordinance, Lisa put out an announcement, it will be, I don't know, a special meeting or board meeting? My question is, we will be able to see the draft of the new language prior to that meeting?
Who's we?
The public.
Oh, yes, I'm sure that it will be on the website, once, once we've gotten to that point, but the, I'm advised here, important meeting dates, Pico at Kennet High School, April 2nd, 7:00 PM, so there will not be a, that's a night that you would normally have, that we would normally have a work session, we will not have a work session that night. There is a meeting on Waze Lane, there's a meeting regarding Waze Lane on April 16th at 5:30, and then, specifically to your point, discharge of firearms meeting April 7th at 7:00 PM. And I, I apologize, I can't tell you where these meetings are going to occur.
I think the gun discharge, firearm discharge meeting is here.
And the Pico's at high school.
And the Pico meeting is at the high school.
But the other one, I don't know. Waze Lane.
So there'll be more information out on that, but the dates are the important ones, April 2nd for Pico, Waze Lane, April 16th, and the firearms, April 7th. Bill, did you have your hand up? Did you have something you wanted?
No, I have one more thing for you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
A note of concern in this meeting for more than a year has been Indian Hannah Monument, which was on Route 52 North, on the old 52 North, it actually was in Kennet Township even though the sign of Pensbury was further south. It has been moved, it stayed in the township, it's at the Chester County Tourist Bureau.
Miami Valley.
Yes, on Greenwood Road, it's not completed, but they've done a very good job so far, so, we did get our wish.
Good, good, thanks for reminding us of that. Yes, was there another question over here? Okay. If there's nothing else, we can, we can set a new record, and adjourn at 8:30. Thank you all very much on this very rainy night.